Start, I should note that we that all meetings are recorded and will be made available to the public on our YouTube channel after the meeting has taken place. Your participation indicates your consent to being included in the meeting recording. So it's seven fifteen and noting that the minute the meeting is being recorded. Uh, we have traditional ten minutes of public participation before the meeting to allow any resident to address the council on any matter appearing on the agenda for this meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councillor Thorp wishes to address the meetings.
Please go ahead councillor Thorp.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fellow councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My wife Peggy and I came to live in St Neets twenty five years ago when I left the Royal Air Force. We chose to live in St Neets because we had found our dream home close to the river, the wonderful parks and the friendliness of the residents. It wasn't long before councillor Derek Giles came knocking on our door to encourage me to serve the community as a local councillor. After two or three failed attempts, I was successfully elected as a district councillor for Eton Soken. I served from two thousand and four to two thousand and eleven. I was also successful in joining the town council in two thousand and seven and was honoured to serve as mayor from two thousand and nine to two thousand and eleven. I know that Peggy thoroughly enjoyed her time as mayoress as her wardrobe was gave ample evidence to this. Prior to twenty eleven, apart from the merril chain, the council had no civic regalia. I was pleased when the council agreed to purchase the robes for the mayor and deputy as befit at the largest town in the county. I was devastated when Peggy passed away in twenty eighteen, losing the love of my life, and I tried to find a way to permanently commemorate her service to the town and my love for her. It wasn't until I had the honour to serve again as mayor in twenty nineteen that I came upon a solution. I worked with local goldsmith, Mr. Paul Goldstore, to develop a design that would achieve this aim and add to our civic pride and regalia. Over to you, Paul.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I don't know if you can see me. Um, I, 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 I don't appear on my, forgive me, this is the first virtual meeting I've conducted. Can you see me, everybody?
No.
Okay, um, I'll continue. Uh, hopefully Karen can rectify that. Do anything at this end?
Is, is your camera switched on, Paul?
Oh, you don't, do you know what? Who said that?
Ste- uh, Stephen.
Stephen, that is what I've done wrong.
There you go.
Okay.
We can see you now.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I apologise for my ineptitude. Um, so good evening councillors and members of the public. Uh, Gordon, thank you for your kind words. Um, what I'm gonna do, um, if you'll permit me, I'm going to try and show you via the meeting what Gordon has commissioned and, and I would like to just say a few words while I'm doing this. So firstly, I want to say what a privilege it's been working with Gordon on the St Neets Town Council's very own ceremonial mace. It, um, I would like to thank Gordon for entrusting Goldstraw's, Goldstraw Goldsmith and his personal generosity in the commissioning of this mace. This mace is made from twenty-two carat, uh, I beg your pardon, it's made from sterling silver and is coated with a twenty-two carat, with twenty-two carat gold. And this is all built on a hardwood staff. There is a dedication plaque here, which possibly isn't legible, but obviously that will get seen a lot sooner rather than later, hopefully. This mace represents, um, part of a legacy that both Gordon and Peggy will have given to St Neets Town Council. It's been my honour to play a small part in what will be seen as recognition of the contribution his beloved wife Peggy gave to the townspeople of St Neets. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goldstraw. Um, I had the pleasure on.
Can I, can I just?
Sorry, councillor Thorp, yes.
Yeah, thank you, Paul, for your, uh, skill and professionalism in producing this beautifully crafted ceremonial mace.
Seems to have lost Gordon. We should give, give him a second to recover.
Come back to, come back to us, Gordon.
That's a rather inopportune moment for that to happen, isn't it?
Oh, we got it.
G- Gordon, did you finish? I'm, I'm afraid your internet paused for a second, Gordon. So we didn't quite catch what you had to say at the end there. Could you repeat it? Okay, so, so, so I had on Wednesday, I had the, uh, the honour and the pleasure of, uh, receiving the mace with, from Gordon. Uh, and I can confirm that it is an exquisite piece of craftsmanship. Um, and it's a wonderful legacy, both to Peggy and to councillor Thorpe as well, who I think we'd all agree has, has been an excellent councillor. Um, and I think it's a testament to councillor Giles' talent, as a talent spotter in, 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 uh, in approaching Gordon in the first place. So I think, uh, I can't speak for the council, but from my opinion, I think this is an honour. I think it, the increasing civic regalia is a good thing. And I think it's something that we should have on display at all of our council meetings when we get back to meeting in real life. Um, I guess the council should probably vote on that at some stage. I don't know if we can do that tonight. Um, but it is, it's a, it's a wonderful piece of, of, uh, craftsmanship. It's a, uh, and it's a very fitting tribute to Peggy, thinking, I never had the pleasure of meeting, but, but having spent lots of time with Gordon. Uh, I've heard lots of stories and I know how much he loved her. So, thank you very much, Mr. Goldsmith. Thank you very much councillor Thorpe. Uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll vote, I think, uh, in the meeting about how we're going to use that mace. Um, is there any other members of the public who would like to address the meeting? Okay, then we should proceed with the main.
Chair, chairman.
Yes, councillor Thorpe, councillor, councillor Giles, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'd just like to say thank you very much, uh, for that very generous offer from Gordon and Peggy. And, uh, let's hope it's never used in anger. However, I've just had a phone call.
It would do a lot of damage. It's a, it's a very.
Yes, yes. Uh, I've just had a call from councillor Terry who can't get online. So I don't know whether Karen can do anything about that. He's been sitting there for ten minutes waiting to be let in.
I've had some messages from members of the public as well saying they can't get in. I'm not sure. I can't see anybody in the, um, in the lobby at all.
There's nobody waiting. I can resend the link to councillor Terry, if that helps.
May I suggest that it may be that they've clicked on the top link on the agendas page, which is tomorrow's meeting and not tonight's. It would be worth checking.
I cannot do that here, so I think, uh, let's just proceed with the meeting. Do we have to, there's no roll call on the agenda tonight. Do we have to do a roll call, Deputy Town Clerk or not? No, that's, that's agenda item number three, my fault. That's agenda item number three. So we, we, we do them.
You have to elect a chair first, I believe. Philip, is that correct?
That is correct. Your first item of business is to elect the chairman.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't read all the way through the agenda. Thank you. Um, so, uh, to start proceedings then, agenda item number one, election of a chair and town mayor for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two civic year. Uh, councillor, that, councillor Maslin has his hand up. Colin.
First of all, I'd like to turn my mic on. Uh, I don't know if you're planning to stand again, Chair, but I, if, if you do stand, I should like to second your, um, application for another term as mayor.
Thank you very much.
You've done a sterling job.
Councillor Maslin, before, before we proceeded, I was going to nominate councillor Robert Simonis to be mayor. Councillor Simonis, do you accept that nomination?
Well, I'll say thank you, Stephen, but I'm not in a position at the moment to accept that. Um, I do completely agree with councillor Maslin. Um, I think he'd be an excellent mayor for a second term. So thank you. I'm going to decline.
Thank you, Robert. And thank you for all your hard work as my deputy, especially with, with regards to the strategy, which I think leaves us in a very much stronger position starting this civic year than we were at the start of last one. So thank you for that, Rob. Um, councillor Christine Green.
Well, thank, thank councillor Maslin for seconding, um, any proposal. I was going to actually propose councillor Ferguson um, as mayor again this year is to follow on from the excellent work he's already done. So I'm not sure, uh, how that works, but I'm, so are you seconding my proposal or?
You can't, you can't, can't second a proposal that hasn't been made yet. So if you're proposing.
Who's councillor Maslin said he'd second it, but did you mean you proposed it councillor Maslin?
Yeah, yes, I did. I, I, I propose councillor Ferguson to run for a second term.
Well, I will second your proposal councillor Maslin. Thank you.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you to councillors Maslin and Green. Um, if you'd have asked me two weeks ago, I was openly telling people that I, I wouldn't be standing for a second year, but I have been approached by so many people, um, who have convinced me. So I am willing to accept your nomination. Thank you very much. Councillor Chapman.
Uh, thank you, chairman. Um, I would like to point out that the, uh, the chain that you're wearing was actually donated to the council by, um, Paul Gold, Goldstraw.
That's, 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 that's a very good point and I meant to make that point. Yes, it's a, it's a, it's the new chain. I think, I think Gordon, were you the first person to wear this chain, Gordon, or?
No, it was me.
It was you, but it's, it's a one, it's another wonderful bit of craftsmanship.
Yeah.
I've enjoyed it wearing it very much this year. So thank you, Mr. Goldstraw.
I think that, uh, I think that, um, I wouldn't want to claim to speak on behalf of all of the council, but I think that, um, it's pretty unanimous that you've done um, an excellent job as mayor during the past year. And, um, although I believe I, well, I hope I have my hand up first, but I was going to propose you. And, um, if you're, you know, if, um, you're already proposed, I will be supporting that. And I think you've done an excellent job and the town is very lucky to have you as the, uh, as the mayor last year. And hopefully you will agree to stand again in the coming year.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry. Thank you, councillor Chapman. I'm gonna try not to blush and get emotional again like I did at the, the, the annual meeting, but I, I really appreciate those comments. Councillor Derek Giles.
Well, thank you, uh, thank you, Stephen. Yeah, as, uh, I probably speak for most of the, uh, past it mayors or mayors of the past, I should say. Uh, when the first year, I think I'm, I'm right in saying it's, it's probably the hardest, the second year is there to enjoy. Okay, and enjoy.
Uh, I, I, I enjoyed the first, it was an unusual year, but I did enjoy the first year, but thank you very much. Um, and I will try to, well, if, if I am elected, I will try to enjoy this year.
Yeah, you'll enjoy it even more.
Councillor Mrs. Giles.
Thank you, chairman. Um, yes, I'm, I'm delighted that you are going to stand again. It's been a tough year for everybody. Um, but it's been a really tough year for you, um, as a mayor trying to hold things together. Um, I remember my own and, and Derek's how over two hundred engagements. Um, every weekend, you don't know whether you're coming or going, but you meet some wonderful people, you attend some wonderful things. And I do hope that the second year, you, you and your misses will be really able to enjoy it and, and just go for it, enjoy every second of it. It's a wonderful opportunity. It's a wonderful offer. It's hard work. It's tiring. Um, some days you'll only have, oh, no, some weeks you'll probably only have sandwiches in the car going from one enjoyment to another, but you go ahead and enjoy it. You've earned it this last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. You had over two hundred civic engagements. This year I've had over two, probably three. Um, but, but yes, we'd look forward to doing some more of those things next year, as, as is my wife Charlotte. So I really appreciate those comments. Are there any more nominations?
I can't put my hand down. Oh, yes.
Um, Philip, if there are no more nominations, we don't need to vote, do we?
You're still chairman until somebody deposes you, so I'm pleased to advise you are chairman for the council for twenty-one, twenty-two. Congratulations.
That, thank you, Philip, and thank you to all the town council. Being elected last year is the greatest honour of my life. It's been a really interesting year. Um, I've been really, really overwhelmed by all of the support, both from my fellow councillors and from the whole town. Um, it's been, yeah, it's been a difficult year for us, but I, I think the thing that convinced me to stand again is I want to be part of the town bouncing back from the terrible year we've had. And I think it's an exciting time. And so, uh, I'm really looking forward to that. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Agenda item number two, election of a deputy chair and deputy mayor for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to repeat my previous, um, proposal. I'd like to propose Rob Simonis, councillor Rob Simonis to be my, to continue being my deputy chair. Rob, do you accept that nomination?
Yeah, thank you. I would very willingly accept that. Um, I think it's been, uh, it's been a very interesting year. Um, although my involvement, thanks to your, uh, lots of involvement, has been quite limited this year, so a lot this past year. So I'm looking forward to hopefully actually taking part in something. So, yes.
I, I only had two civic events, so sharing them out seemed to be a bit unfair. So I'll share them more fairly this time. Thank you. Uh, councillor Caroline Green.
Yeah, I second that. You were a brilliant team last year and I don't think you guys should be split up again this year. I think you should carry on the good work.
Councillor Maslin.
Thank you, Chair. I'm back with you again. Uh, I should like to suggest that since it's been a difficult year and we're, we're all happy to have you back for a second, could we not have some form of a, uh, maybe a councillor's barbecue uh, on, on the Regatta Meadows or some, some sort of function? We've never done it as a council, certainly not since I've been a councillor. I don't know if other mayors have done it, but let's have a a firm's do, as I guess we'd call it commercially. So I should like to, uh, and, uh, what is it? A notice without, um, notices or whatever you call it. I should like to suggest that we institute a mayor's do.
Uh, councillor, councillor Christine Green's pointed out, this isn't on the agenda, so we can't discuss it, which is true. I think this is a way of trying to make me buy the drinks, to be honest. But Colin, I think that's a fantastic idea. The only, the only thing I'd like to add, it shouldn't just be the councillors. I think we all need to get the staff together as well.
Our staff as well, of course.
I've had a fantastically hard year as well.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should have it as a, as a, a public event. Uh, let's just let you pay for it. Uh, for all of us councillors.
Thank you, councillor Maslin.
That's all right. I'll bang you in the fiver. There you go.
Councillor Sandy Giles.
Thank you, chairman. Um, I'd just like to say, um, delighted that you're prepared to stand again, Rob. Um, it's been lovely. You are a good team, the pair of you, and everything I said about Stephen and Charlotte enjoying next year applies to you and your good lady as well. Um, go for it. You'll love every minute of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Appreciate those words.
Well done, Rob.
Do we have any other nominations for deputy mayor? In which case I think Robert Simonis, councillor Robert Simonis is elected for a second term as deputy mayor. Congratulations, Rob. And thank you for all your hard work alongside me as well. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Right, let me just open up my agenda again then. Thank you very much, everybody. Right, agenda item number three, apologies for absence and roll call. Deputy Town Clerk, would you like to do the roll call now, please?
Yes, of course. If we're already starting from the top, councillor Andrew Poodle.
Present, yep.
Councillor Barry Banks.
Present.
Councillor Barry Chapman.
Present.
Councillor Ben Pitts.
Present.
Councillor Caroline Green.
Present.
Councillor Caroline Gregson.
Present.
Councillor Christine Green.
Present.
Councillor Colin Maslin.
Present.
Councillor Delphine Johnson.
Present.
Councillor Derek Giles.
Present.
Councillor Diana Collins, we have apologies for, with valid reasons. Next councillor Doug Terry, who I think managed to join us.
I have finally.
Thank you. Councillor Emma Speed.
Present.
Present.
Present. That was Nicola.
Yes, present.
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 I'm present. You're, you're sounding more and more like a Dalek all the time.
Like a Dalek, yeah.
So I'm not sure if you can, um, yes. A, a Dalek with a, with a sore throat. Okay. Thank you. So, so, so the next agenda item is agenda item number four, oh, declaration of members' interests, to receive from councillors declarations as to disclosable pecuniary interests and or non-statutory disclosable interests, along with the nature of those interests in relation to any agenda item. Uh, does anyone have any interest to declare? Would be rather surprising considering tonight's agenda, but I'll give the opportunity to say. No, thank you very much. Agenda item number five, to appoint committees for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Deputy Town Clerk, could you share the list of committees to the screen, please, so we can all look at them together?
Yes, of course. Bear with me.
While we're waiting for Karen, may I suggest that if she can get maybe some, uh, with a councillor approval to get some laptops or something, piece of equipment which she can work with without sounding like a Dalek.
I think it's probably the internet is, is the issue, to be honest, but it's a good point. Um, while we're waiting for the, for the list to be put on the screen, um, is there anybody who wants to, to change the committees that they're on or move committees?
I would like to.
So councillor Christine Green.
I would like to come off personnel. I'll stay on the other two, finance and operations. Thank you.
I suppose we all have the list of, um,
the list of.
Of, of committees in our, I hear it's on the screen now. If, if you're not speaking, can you mute your microphone? Cause I can hear an echo and it's really off putting. So, so when it says planning nine members, is that, is that the number that's in the committee? How many, how many do we have to have on a committee? This is, this is always the question, how do we balance the committees properly? So we've got nine people on planning now. Is that number we have to have? Is that part of the, the?
I think, I think Chair.
Yes.
I think Chair, we, we got to nine on planning because the, the meetings are early in the evening. Um, and a lot of people can't make a six fifteen meeting. So I, I know Rob's had, had trouble and Andrew's had trouble getting there for, for quarter past six. Um, so we put it up to nine to make sure we were always quarrelled. And touch wood and fingers crossed, so far we've only once been down to three. Uh, and in fact, we have one where we were down to two without a couple of phone calls. So I think that's why, uh, planning has nine, to make sure we've got three. If that makes sense.
Yes, that's fine. Uh, councillor Delphine Johnson, is that an old hand? Councillor Caroline Green.
Yeah, I did, um, message Karen, I need to come off the committees because unless it's remote, I can't be present. So I need to come off planning and off P and E.
Councillor Ben. No, thank you. I'm just looking at the, I'm just looking at numbers. That's noted. Councillor Pitt. Are you on mute, Ben?
Still, still catches me every time. Sorry. Yeah. So on the numbers, I think they are the maximums. I'm sure a clerk or deputy can confirm. Um, so, so I've, just to say, I've really enjoyed chairing P and E over the last two years, but I felt that in the last couple of meetings, well, quite recently, it's become quite often that I've had a conflict of interest due to my, you know, external extracurricular activities, as it were. So I would like to come off of promotion and events. I'm also a bit overstretched, so I'd like to come off the IT committee as well, and I'd be happy to join the Ops committee.
Thank you councillor Pitt. Councillor Derek Giles.
Uh, thank you, chairman. There's no provision here for the vacancy which we, which will be filled in a couple of days' time in the by-election for, uh, for Eton Soken. I'd like you to be aware of that, please.
That's an excellent point. We could, we could probably assign to that person to the committee we don't want to sit on, can't we? Just by the fact that it's, uh, the last one available. That's a good point. We should, I think we should give them the opportunity to sit on, on any committee they choose to as a new councillor. So that's a really good point. Thank you councillor Thorpe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe it's in our standing orders that, uh, every councillor must be a member of at least one committee.
Can somebody confirm that for me? We have, we have the standing orders on the agenda tonight. So if somebody could have a, a look through, that would be helpful while we have the rest of this discussion. Um, thank you councillor Thorpe. Uh, councillor Gregson.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think I'm erroneously on the grants subcommittee there. I stepped down from that a while ago because of the six fifteen timing of that. Um, and I'm also going to step down from personnel. Um, I'll be going back to work soon and so like finance and governance and strategy, I think will be enough to keep me busy. And the number of working groups, I must say as well.
Well, in that case councillor Gregson, I'd like to thank you for your excellent chairmanship of, of the personnel committee this year. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I've had quite a tough year, I think, with personnel, and I think you've done an excellent job. So I'm, I'm sad to hear that you're leaving and I just want to say thank you on behalf of the council and the committee for all your hard work in that role. Thank you councillor Gregson.
Thanks, Stephen.
Uh, councillor Johnson.
Oh, yes, uh, sorry, I'm going to be a bit annoying, but, um, unfortunately, um, councillor Colin's haven't been able to be with us for quite a while. Uh, and, um, she has two spots for two different committees. Uh, maybe one of those spots could be filled by the new person. Uh, just something to bear about, um, because, say, we need to consider where this new person could sit. And since, uh, councillor Collins have, at the moment, have been able to join us, it might be something to think of.
Thank you. I should just note, actually, I'm rather embarrassed that I thanked councillor Gregson for her excellent work in chairing personnel, but failed to thank councillor Pitt for his similarly excellent work in chairing the promotion and events committee, which is now left. So thank you also councillor Pitt. Um, I don't attend that committee, but I can see from all the fantastic things that happen in town that that committee's been really effective under your chairmanship. So thank you very much for that as well. Uh, councillor Cooper Marsh.
Thank you, Chair. Um, can I come off Ops, please? Um, and I don't, I don't mind taking up an empty spot on personnel if need be.
That would be, I think personals, we've had two people leave personals. So that would be very, very helpful, especially of, for a councillor of your considerable. That would be very, very helpful, especially for a councillor of your considerable experience. So I think that would be a good choice. Thank you. Councillor Presland.
Hi, I'd like to come off Ops, please.
Noted. Councillor Simonis. Deputy Town Clerk, are you keeping up with this? Or would you like me to slow down?
No, I'm okay at the moment. Thank you.
Just yell if we're going too quickly.
I will do.
Councillor Derek Giles, you still have your hand up. Is that an old hand?
Oh, Stephen.
Yes.
It's a historian.
Thank you. Councillor Simonis, you were next anyway.
Yeah, thanks. I would like to join Personnel, please.
We're actually at 10 on Personnel currently, so that would take us over the numbers.
I could, I could.
I did leave Karen, but you haven't taken me off.
Oh, I didn't hear you, Christine. Apologies.
I said it right at the start of the item, so you probably missed it. Thanks. I'll put that as well.
I'll add Rob in as well. There we go.
Councillor Maslin.
Thank you, Chair. I'm quite happy. I enjoy planning and I want to definitely stay there.
I hope you are going to stay there, Councillor Maslin. We'll be lost without you.
I would quite like to go on Ops again. I was on it in a previous life. And I'm more than happy to go back on there if you have a vacancy there.
I'm
But I'm also concerned about this committee that I've heard nothing about, emergency planning, which seems to be just Gordon. Can anybody highlight anything here? What is it? What does it do? Apart from Dow 999.
Yeah. May I speak, Mr. Chairman?
Councillor Thorpe, please.
Yeah, I would like to invite yourself, councillor Ferguson, councillor Christine Green, councillor Ben Pitt, and councillor Barry Chapman to serve on this committee if they are so willing.
What is it?
It was a committee we appointed a meeting or two ago to manage our response to large-scale emergency. Not least of which the recent flooding events was the motivating factor. But it could in fact be any emergency, so it could be a large crash. It's about how the town council can help the community respond and how we could provide our facilities for that help. So I think it's an important committee. Is that right, Councillor Thorpe?
That is absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman.
I'm happy.
Thank you.
Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to make the observation that both the Chair and the Deputy Chair of Finance, sorry, of Personnel, have said that they no longer wish to be on that committee. That means that the committee doesn't have a chairman. As we discussed earlier on, you can't have resolutions of the you can only have advisory committees. So that may give us a problem and I'd like to I'd like to understand from our clerk what, how that situation would be dealt with.
In the absence of a chairman, the chairman of council, the mayor, would take precedent. But the chairman is appointed at the meeting.
But he's not on that committee.
If you read at the top, the town
Yes, sorry, he is. Yeah, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, but I believe, Mr. Chairman, if I may interrupt again, we have yet to elect chairman and vice-chairman of committees.
Which is agenda item number six, I do believe. So we had planned to do that tonight. So I think that matter will be quickly resolved. With regard to the line in red, actually, I am an ex officio member of all committees and it might help to create some vacancies if you remove my name from the lists. Does that make any sense, do you think, to do that? While we ponder that, councillor Johnson, you have got a hand up again.
Sorry. Yes, if you needed another person for the emergency planning, I'd be happy to go on there if this can help.
We have a vacancy. We've had two vacancies. So councillor Johnson, I think your assistance would be appreciated. Councillor Sandy Giles.
Yep, thank you. I just wanted to say, if we're all going through the committees, I thoroughly enjoy planning. I want to stay on planning. I'm happy to stay on Personnel. Thank you.
Are we supposed to enjoy it? Didn't realise that was a thing. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, it's the chairman. He makes it such fun.
That's true.
Oh, I'm blushing now.
I've got three more hands up. Nicola, is that a historical hand?
Sorry, yes, historical. I'll put it down.
So is that's the, have we finished substantially rearranging the committees? Councillor Maslin again, sorry.
Yes, I've just tried to verify. Am I on Ops or not?
You should be on Ops.
Thank you very much indeed.
You are. Your name is on the list.
Thank you very much indeed.
Chairman, can we still take into account that we've got a new councillor? And you did say that you would give that person the choice of which committee they wanted to be on.
Is there any committees that don't have a vacancy? They all have at least one vacancy at the moment. That's a good observation, but they've all got one vacancy, so.
Oh, right. Okay, okay, that's mine.
If the new councillor is especially enthusiastic, they could join all of the council, all of the committees, which would be a baptism of fire. Are we happy now with this list? Everybody, please carefully check the list on the screen. We can change it afterwards. Well, we can't change it afterwards because we won't be having any meetings until we reconvene. So we're kind of stuck with this committee list until formal meetings return, whenever that's going to be. And if there's no more changes, I'll give you another 30 seconds just to look for your name on the lists. That was actually much easier than I expected it to be. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Town Clerk, for her fantastic typing as well. That's quite a lot of reorganisation. Councillor Chapman.
Thank you, Chairman. I believe we need to vote on that, so I'd like to propose that list.
Do you have a second, Councillor Chapman?
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you, Justin. Yes. So all those in favour of this committee membership, say yes.
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 Anyone against, say no. Any abstentions? So that's carried. Thank you very much. Agenda item number six, to appoint chairs to committees for 2021-2022. Clerk, how do we proceed with this normally? I think last year I had to nominate the chairperson of the committees. Is that the way that we would normally proceed? Philip.
If you've got existing chairs who are willing to continue, it's always good to do that unless anybody else wishes to take that role on. But I would then go then to your vacant ones, but go with the ones where you've got a chair, see if they wish to remain in the seat.
Councillor Giles.
Chairman, I think it's okay to have the proposal for Chair from you, if you like, the mayor. But I think the position of Deputy Chair should be left to that chairperson. You know, who you can work with, who you can't work with.
I think, yeah, let's have a look at the agenda item is only to appoint chairs to committees tonight. So we could, in the first meeting of the committee, which would be a more appropriate place to do that, I think, we could appoint the deputy chairperson.
Yeah.
Councillor Chapman.
Yes, the well, up until, I think up until last year, the chairs and the deputy chairs were elected at the first meeting. Obviously, if we're if we're happy with the chairs, then the deputy chair is elected at the first meeting. It isn't an appointment of the it isn't an appointment of the of the members at this meeting. Can I also say that obviously we've got, we've not got a Chair of Personnel. I would suggest or propose that the appointment of the Chair of Personnel is left to the first meeting of that committee. I can't have a, if we can't chair formally elected until we get back to face-to-face meetings, that the role will be delegated to the mayor in the interim.
I second that proposal, Barry.
I don't see why we can't just elect a chair tonight, though, from the list we have available. I mean, I think the Chair of Personnel is a very specific role that's got lots of delegated authority to deal with matters. And I think it would be, I think it would be rather fallhardy to not have a Chair of Personnel if we can avoid it. Councillor Johnson.
Okay. First of all, we are going to elect the chair tonight, so it's not a problem from the list. And I may suggest that we go from column to column since we have them in front of us. And we ask the member of each committee who they would like to be on that committee. So I don't see it to be a problem that at the moment we don't have a Chair of Personnel because it isn't the agenda for us to elect a chair. The other thing I wanted to make clear, it's not up to the Chair of any committee to decide, to tell the committee who is going to be the Deputy Chair. It's up to the committee to elect the Deputy Chair, not the chairman of the committee.
Okay, let's be clear.
But that goes back to what Barry was saying.
I think we're all agreed, it's not on the agenda tonight. We're not electing deputy chairs tonight. But this agenda item is to elect chairs or chairpeople, as they're correctly called. So we will be electing chairpeople, but we will leave the election of deputy chairpeople to the first meeting of the committee. Let's hear from our clerk, Philip. Sorry, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Regarding your Chair of Personnel, you do need to fill that position tonight. The reason being, and you've got no town clerk at the moment, and the deputy often has to refer, and her terms of reference are to the mayor and to the Chair of Personnel. And you're putting all of that onus in onto one person, so you do need to fill that position.
Yeah, it seems to be a bit of a circular argument if we don't do that tonight. So I agree with you and I think that's something we should definitely do. Councillor Christine Green.
I think it's quite important to elect chairs tonight because drawing up the agenda for that first meeting with the deputy clerk or the clerk is quite an important job, I think. You know, for the chair to go in cold, I think involvement with drawing up the agenda is important for each meeting. And to have no chair to do that with leaves quite a big void, really.
I agree. Councillor Giles.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, going back to the Personnel, I think it's very important we do elect a chair tonight and the person who I would recommend with loads and loads of experience is Councillor Thorpe. If he's willing to do that role.
I'd second that.
Let's get to that when we get to that. Let's do that. I thought the nominations were going to come from the chair as well, so I want to just make sure we do that properly and with the correct proceeding. Deputy Town Clerk.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Just, we do have a proposal on the table at the moment that's been seconded, that the mayor steps in as Chair of Personnel until meetings resume. Does that still stand or is that being withdrawn?
I'm happy to withdraw it if that's the feeling of the Chairman of Council.
Thank you.
That's my feeling. Who was your seconder, Barry? Could they have to withdraw it as well, I think? Have to withdraw the seconding of that. I think it was Colin.
It was Colin Maslin.
Councillor Maslin.
So you want me to withdraw the proposal for Gordon to be Chair of Personnel?
No, that was a different, that's a different proposal. The proposal was that what was the proposal again? Sorry.
Sorry, Chairman, I've withdrawn it.
But I think your seconder has to withdraw it as well. So it was
No, Chair, procedurally, I think only if I am making a change to the proposal, does he need to second it.
Okay, so thank you. That's withdrawn then. Shall we proceed committee by committee and recognising that the makeup of some of these committees has changed substantially and there are some quite experienced councillors on committees who would make excellent chairpeople, who are perhaps not the current chairperson. So we'll start off with planning and I'd like to propose councillor Maslin as Chair of Planning.
Thank you. I accept that proposal.
Thorpe would like to second that.
Thank you very much, Gordon. And I'm happy to accept the proposal.
Do we have any other proposals? So councillor Maslin is elected as Chairperson of Planning. The next on the list is Promotion and Events, of which councillor Pitt has left this committee, so I would like to propose councillor Nicola Presland as Chairperson of Promotion and Events.
I'd second that.
Nicola, do you accept that?
Yes, I accept that.
Would anybody else like to propose anybody for Chairperson of Promotion and Events? Therefore, congratulations, councillor Presland. You're now Chairperson of Promotion and Events.
Thank you very much.
Operations and Amenities, which is a big committee, we have several experienced councillors here. Councillor Giles has been the Chair of this committee as long as I've been a councillor. I'll let the council decide, but I'd like to propose councillor Pitt as Chairman of Ops, if that's possible. Do I have a seconder?
Yes, I would like to.
Would anybody else like to nominate anybody from council for Ops?
Councillor Giles.
So councillor Maslin nominates councillor Giles. Do you have a seconder?
I'll second councillor Giles.
Councillor Chapman, so we have two nominations for Ops. Any other nominations? Councillor Giles, you got your hand up? Councillor Giles, do you accept that nomination, first of all?
Yes, yes, Chairman. I would like to continue. There are lots of various items in the agenda which I was hoping to get completed by in this coming year. And you know my views on the slippies and things like that, and it's trying to overcome those events, so I would like
councillor Pitt, did I ask you if you accepted your nomination as well?
I do accept. Thank you.
Therefore, we're going to have to move to a vote. So Deputy Town Clerk, could you read the roll call? And every councillor would just simply say if they're voting for councillor Giles, for councillor Pitt, or if they're abstaining.
Yes, of course. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes. Yes, you sound fantastic.
Okay, so Andrew Poodle.
Yep.
Is that, are we, is Andrew Poodle going to say yes?
Just, I think we should vote for Giles or councillor Poodles. Just say either Giles or, sorry, Giles or Pitt. Don't vote for yourself.
Yes.
So just say Giles or Pitt.
That's Pitt, thank you. Councillor Barry Banks.
Pitt.
Councillor Barry Chapman.
Giles.
Councillor Pitt.
Pitt.
Councillor Caroline Green.
Pitt.
Councillor Caroline Gregson.
Pitt.
Councillor Christine Green.
Giles.
Councillor Colin Maslin.
Giles.
Councillor Delphine Johnson.
Pitt.
Councillor Derek Giles.
Yes, myself, yeah.
Councillor Doug Terry.
Giles.
Councillor Emma Speed.
Pitt.
Councillor Gordon Thorpe.
Giles.
Councillor Justin Cooper Marsh. Councillor Justin Cooper Marsh. Justin there?
Pitt.
Thank you. Councillor Nicola Presland.
Pitt.
Councillor Paul Davis.
Pitt.
Councillor Rob Simonas.
Pitt.
Councillor Sandy Giles. Sandy there? Hello? Okay, councillor Stephen Ferguson.
Pitt.
Has Sandy come back online? No.
I think, given the numbers, I think the motion is carried anyway.
Yeah, I concede defeat Chairman.
So I'd like to congratulate councillor Pitt on his appointment as Chair of Ops, but I'd also like to sincerely thank councillor Giles for the excellent work he's done across the past three years, and possibly more years than that, as Chairperson of Ops. And I'm sure Derek, that will want your help and advice in, councillor Pitt will be accepting your help and advice in fulfilling all the fantastic projects we've already started, so thank you very much. Finance and Governance, I propose councillor Cooper Marsh.
Second that.
I accept that nomination.
Any other proposals? Thanks very much, councillor Cooper Marsh continues as Chair of Finance and Governance. Strategy and Development, I propose councillor Simonas.
I'll second that.
I'm not going to accept that proposal, Chair.
Do you have, okay.
But instead, I'm going to propose Caroline Gregson.
I'll second Caroline Gregson as Chair of Strategy then. Do we have any other proposals?
Sorry Chair, does councillor Gregson accept the nomination?
Councillor Gregson?
Yes, sure.
Any other nominations? Councillor Gregson is therefore elected as Chair of Strategy and Development, congratulations. Personnel, I would like to propose then councillor Simonas as Chair of Personnel.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chapman, were you accepting that nomination, Rob?
I was, thank you.
Any other nominations? Therefore councillor Simonas is elected as Chair of Personnel. Information and Technology, I would like to promote, to propose councillor Poodle.
I'll second that.
Councillor Poodle, do you accept nomination?
I'll accept it.
Any other nominations? Councillor Poodle is elected Chair of the IT Committee. Emergency Planning, I would like to propose councillor Thorpe.
I'll second that.
I accept the nomination, thank you.
Any other nominations? Councillor Thorpe is duly elected, and the Grants Subcommittee, I propose councillor Cooper Marsh.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Oh, sorry councillor Cooper Marsh, would you like to Chair Grants Subcommittee? Do you accept nomination?
I will, but I thought it was de facto, if you chaired the Finance and Governance, you chaired the Grant Subcommittee, but I will happily do that.
Well, there are no other nominations, so you are duly elected as the Chairman of the Grants Subcommittee, whether or not it was de facto or not, so thank you very much, Justin. That's the end of that agenda item. Agenda item number seven, to approve the appointment outside bodies for 2021/2022. Deputy Town Clerk, could we see that list as well please, on screen?
Yes, bear with me.
And I think we should have a similar process, if anybody wants to come off any committees, to be honest, before we elect. Does anybody want to voluntarily leave any of the committees?
Outside bodies.
Outside bodies, sorry, any of the outside bodies.
I'm happy to leave the Eton's to make way for the new councillor, whoever they may be.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I haven't been invited to any Sinead's Initiative meetings, so I'll happily come off that committee, or if I don't come off it, then I'll happily respond to any invitations, but I haven't been invited to any of the meetings, so it wasn't a deliberate...
Chair, I do not believe they're aware that you're being nominated.
Could somebody...
One of the things we need, sorry, one of the things we need to do after this meeting is to write to all the organisations notifying them of their appointments for the following year.
Thank you. So councillor Cooper Marsh.
Yeah likewise, I've not been invited to any of this, that may be because they don't know, they don't know who to invite, so yeah, I'd like to second what councillor Chapman's saying, we need to write to all the organisations, just let them know which councillors are, you know, present on their committees to invite.
Chair, can I make a point?
Yes councillor Maslin.
Cambridge and Peterborough Steering Group, bearing in mind that we've got election of a new Mayor this week, maybe we should wait until we know who the new Mayor is?
This is the Mayor of the Combined Authority, the Mayor doesn't really play a role in that committee, hasn't been an attendee at any of the meetings, I don't think is an inviter to any of the meetings, I think it's a committee established by that Mayor, so I don't think the identity of the Mayor should make any difference, unless of course, the new Mayor wanted to abolish the committee perhaps, but I'm not sure that that's probably a valid objection. Councillor Pitt?
Thank you, regarding Sinead's Initiative, I'm aware that councillor Chapman attends those meetings already, and perhaps he could do so in official capacity.
No, I can't, I can't councillor Pitt, because I am a formal member of the Board of Sinead's Town Initiative.
Yeah, Mr Chairman, I will have to come off Sinead's Initiative, because I've been elected Vice Chair and Trustee, so that would lead, if I remained, it would lead to a conflict of interest.
Thank you councillor Thorpe, so we have a vacancy on the Sinead's Initiative which we need to fill.
Chair, can I suggest that councillor Pitt be, because councillor Pitt is not on our list of representatives, but does attend those meetings.
Councillor Pitt?
I have been attending them as Chair of P and E. It's a daytime meeting, which is really hard for me to get to, I'm happy to be on the list.
You manage it well councillor Pitt.
You're too kind. I'm happy to be named on there, but I can't promise to get to any, every meeting, so if there is a councillor who is able to attend daytime meetings more easily, I would welcome there.
We do have two other councillors who seem to attend those meetings, councillor Thorpe and councillor Chapman are also attending that, so we are quite well covered for that meeting if you cannot attend, so I think that would be fair enough. Councillor Caroline Green?
Yeah, not a lot happens with the Power Station outside body, but I think because of my present situation, I should be taken off the list anyway, just in case anything happens in the future.
I think that originally that was only a single, I don't think that's a vacancy, that was a single representative, and I think we made amends so both Caroline and myself could go on it, so I'm happy to stay on that, because...
But the sandwiches have gone, so there's no point me being there.
No, but I think it's, I think it's a very, that's a very interesting...
An honest councillor!
I think that's quite an interesting body to be involved with, with everything's happening with regard to sustainability of the town, and it'd be useful to keep in contact with those guys, so if they do hold a meeting, I'd be very keen to attend.
Well, if you need a second member, I'd be happy to be there.
Councillor Maslin, I'm not sure if it was the talk of free sandwiches that convinced you, but I would be delighted in your company.
Well, if you do need a second member, I'm more than happy to volunteer for that.
That would be great. Councillor Chapman again?
Yes Chairman, there are a couple of omissions off of this list. One, well, we used to appoint someone to, which isn't on the list, and also there is the Newton and Hadley Charity, which I do, I've always been the representative on that.
I missed the first body, because your microphone cut out councillor Chapman, who was the first body?
The Eton's Charities, I believe, we used to nominate, we used to nominate councillor to...
This has been the list as long as I've been a councillor, we can add to it if you want to.
Well...
If it's necessary.
I've certainly continued to attend Newton and Hadley when they've had meetings. I'm not sure if I'm actually on there as a trustee nominated, originally nominated by the Town Council, but I'm happy to continue with that, but it used to be on the list, the older councillors will remember that. And also the other, the other one was the Eton's Charities, and I believe that councillor Giles sits on that committee, councillor Derek Giles. I'm waiting for him to answer.
Yes, I do.
Is...
Not in a Town Council capacity, it was decided three or four years ago that there was no need for a Town Council representative on there.
That explains it.
Yeah.
But certainly I'm on Newton and Hadley.
Councillor Chapman?
Yeah?
Sorry, on the screen, I'm trying to hear you clearly, is it Newton and Hadley or Newton and...
Hadley.
Hadley, thank you.
Hadley, it's to do with a guy who fell off a horse in the 18th century. It's a small charity.
And is that yourself being listed as the representative for that one?
Yes, I've been doing, I've been doing that one for about 15 years now.
It's officially on the list now.
Thank you.
Councillor Pitt?
Thank you, I'm sure a number of the councillors here are members of other organisations in the town, I'm slightly just wary that we add any to the official list without having an invitation from that group, and if that, if the new addition, Newton and Hadley is an official appointment, then I'm sure we can do it, you know, midterm, but I think just adding to the list is, you know...
Yeah, because I think, well, once it's on the list, I think it's probably on the list for all times, because it's not going to, there's no real provision for taking things off the list, or not much provision, so we need to be careful about adding to lists. I think councillor Chapman, could you check with Newton and Hadley if they have got a vacancy for a councillor? Perhaps, and we can do that subsequently, you attend their meetings anyway.
I attend that meeting, I believe they've now appointed me as a trustee, but I can't remember. They meet about twice a year and distribute funds to Church of England Schools.
Councillor Speed?
You've got councillor Colin Maslin with the splash park, but with the current number of trustees, they only, they can only have one councillor.
I wasn't aware I was on there, Emma, but I'm more than happy to come off it. I've never been to a meeting or been invited. Anybody there?
Yep, no, thank you councillor Maslin, so there's only one space anyway, so councillor Speedy, happy to continue in that role?
Yes.
Could I ask a question of our deputy Town Clerk?
You can.
Will we all get an updated list of who's on what?
You will, together with...
Thank you very much indeed.
So does anybody else want to come off any of the groups, or is everybody happy with our inclusion? I would like to perhaps, councillor Chapman? Councillor Chapman, your hand is up, you're probably on mute.
Apologies, apologies. Yeah, I've attended the Sinead's Museum meetings for many years, I know I'm not the official rep, but I do tend to be the person who turns up most. Now, if that list is as is, and the others wish to turn up, they would quite happily put me on the management board, but obviously that might create a conflict of interest, so...
We have, we already have three councillors for two places on the Sinead's Museum.
If councillor Chapman would like to be on the Sinead's Museum, then I will give him my space, so he can be on there.
Chair, if I may, I don't, well, I don't know if the other councillors, I've seen Delphine at those meetings, but I don't think I've ever seen Barry or Doug. So I wonder if they can confirm if they want to be on that committee. If they do, then as I say, the museum will put me on there as their official management committee, but it would create a conflict of interest for me, so... Does councillor Terry and Banks wish to continue on that committee?
Mr Chairman, I'm quite happy to come off, I've been suspended from every other council meeting apart from this one, so I might as well leave that one out, thank you.
Thank you councillor Terry. Councillor, sorry, Deputy Town Clerk?
Thank you, it was just a question for councillor Chapman, can you remember, we are down to two now, but is it meant to be just two members for the museum?
It is, it is two, I know that Delphine's made some of the, some of the meetings, but they would, I'm sure they would willingly welcome further Town Council representatives to the meeting, but you know, if we're going to decide that we're going to nominate, nominate two or three or whatever, then I'm sure they'd be happy with that.
Are we going to have three for this one, are you going to add your name to the list?
Yes, I prefer to do it that way, rather than have a conflict of interest if possible.
Yeah, I'm happy to, if we need a resolution, I'm happy to propose that.
Well, I think we're going to vote on the whole list to be honest, unless there's any things, councillor Banks?
Yes, I agree to stay on, if that's okay with Barry, I'm quite absolutely...
I note that, I can't see the whole list, but councillor Simonas isn't in any working groups. I did wonder if councillor Simonas would perhaps like to join the Master Plan, Cambridge and Peterborough Combined Authority Steering Group, so I was thinking about nominating him, but councillor Chapman is the current representative, so if I nominate councillor Simonas, would you accept that proposal?
Yeah, I would, I'd be very happy to attend that one.
Do we have a seconder?
Yeah.
Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Councillor Chapman?
Chair, I do think that this is, as I am the longest serving, longest serving member of that committee, I do not think it would be wise to remove me from that committee. I am about the only person who knows what's gone on throughout the life of the committee.
Do we have a nomination for councillor Chapman to stay on that committee?
Yes, Chair.
Councillor Banks, do you have a second?
Yep.
Yeah.
Who was, who was the second? Councillor Johnson?
Yes, I'm happy to second it. But I think you, we may even go to three members if not.
We can't go to three, we can't go to three members on that committee.
I was voting for councillor Chapman.
Well, I think we're going to have to go to a vote to be honest. So we're going to go through the list. It will be the next stage. Is there any other nominations? Then deputy town clerk, could you read the roll call and vote for either councillor Simonas or councillor Chapman?
Okay, everybody's ready? Andrew Pujols.
Simonas.
Barry Banks.
Yes, councillor Chapman.
Ben Pitts.
I'm Simonas.
Sorry, my screen moved. Bear with me. Caroline Green.
Simonas.
Caroline Gregson.
Simonas.
Christine Green.
Simonas.
Colin Maslin.
Unmuted now, Simonas.
Thank you. Delphine Johnson.
Chapman.
Derek Giles.
Chapman.
Doug Terry.
Chapman.
Emma Speed.
Chapman.
Gordon Thorpe.
Chapman.
Justin Cooper Marsh.
Chapman.
Nicola Presland.
Simonas.
Paul Davis.
Chapman.
Rob Simonas.
Simonas.
Sandy Giles. Sandy, can you say who you're voting for?
Yeah, she's left the meeting.
Oh, okay. No vote. And Stephen Ferguson. Hello, can anyone hear me?
I can hear you.
That's muted. So I, I voted Simonas, sorry.
Thank you, Stephen. So that is carried by just one, just one vote in favour of Rob Simonas being a member of the Combined Authority Steering Group.
Thank you. So thank you for that.
Good luck to you, mate.
Chair.
Yes, councillor.
If I may, I just wanted to say thanks to Barry for his input into that steering group. It's been quite a difficult journey. And he's often been, I think, a welcome thought on the side of some of the people that, you know, that we've worked with. But I hope that councillor Simonas can bring some fresh ideas to this, but I will really, I'll miss councillor Chapman's input into it. And I hope that he will still work with us to get the best out of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Chapman for all your hard work and I appreciate it. For the rest of this, do we need, I guess we need to vote on, is there any other changes to this list? So could somebody, anybody, I'll propose this list. Does anybody want to second it?
Councillor Thorpe second.
All those in favour?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Agenda item number 10. No, agenda number eight. God, we're not getting very far. To adopt the calendar of meetings for 2021, 2022, which is going to be interesting if we're not allowed to meet. Could you share the calendar on the screen, please, deputy town clerk?
Yes, of course. One moment. Can you all see that now?
Yep.
So this is based on the same calendar as last year, the same template of meetings. Karen.
Yes, Chair, I just may add, we've got two additional committees since the calendar we had last year. So there's some slight differences, trying to keep the meetings all on Tuesdays so that we don't clash with meetings of HBC and CCC councillors. So it will look slightly different. Not too much hopefully, but we do have two additional committees to what we had last year.
Does anybody, councillor Simonas?
Yeah, as I say, last year, strategy and development didn't have all that many meetings and it was a symptom of kind of where it fell. It looks like that's happening here as well. So you've got the meeting in June, you should then have one in August, but of course there isn't. And then the next one is October. Then the next one should be in December, but isn't. So it's in January and then the next one's April. Yeah, but I think that's what, only four in the year and it should be six. And this year I felt that we would have benefited by having the full every two months. So it was just an observation.
I thought they were quarterly, didn't they?
We could check the T O R on that, but I thought they were every two months. Maybe wrong. I'll say I'll defer to Caroline now as the new chair anyway.
Councillor Speed.
Yeah, just the same as last, just this is Christmas, one, twenty first of December. Look, two posts Christmas, a lot of people are going to be able to make that meeting.
It's a, it's a good point. It is rather close to Christmas.
You could hold it the week before on a Wednesday, the 15th.
Would people prefer to have a Wednesday meeting?
Emergency, an extraordinary.
I'm sure we will. People, people prefer to have a Wednesday meeting.
Chair, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, of course, councillor Pitt.
Which is that we move finance and governance the week before, so that's on a Tuesday the 7th after planning. And then we can move the full council forward, you know, a week earlier as well.
I think that's a very sensible suggestion.
When that impact grant subcommittee, it's 15.
It will do. Grants needs to be held before F and G.
Oh, yeah.
It's tricky when we've got 76 meetings, not going to lie.
Seventy eight now, Karen.
Can you not just swap the 14th around with the 7th then? Planning meets one week later on the 14th and then you can have full council after that. And then on the 7th, you can have grants and then finance straight after each other.
So that's full council after planning.
Yeah, on the 14th. And the two that are booked on the 14th now, move them up to the 7th.
Chair.
Councillor Maslin.
Could I suggest that we delegate the power to the deputy town clerk to put together a list that works for all of us? Otherwise, we're all going to sit here saying, I can't do that Wednesday and we're going to be here all night.
Sorry, Chair, that's what this original list was sent out last week for, so that if members had any issues with some of the dates, we've stuck to the Tuesdays, which is the day of the week that we've historically held our meetings for the last three years.
We don't all have to attend every meeting.
No, you don't.
No, and, and meetings have been very, the attendance of meetings has been very, very good since we switched to online meetings. Although of course, we should bear in mind that from, well, after tomorrow, these meetings might, might, might well be in-person meetings rather than, or probably will be in-person meetings rather than online meetings. So you should make that a consideration too. We're going to have to actually physically travel to the Priory Centre for these meetings. Councillor Johnson.
Yes, obviously it's a big disappointment that the government has gone that way and not embracing the 21st century. My concern is regarding also the meeting in June. And obviously, until at the moment is 21st of June, we should be meeting, obviously, well, we should be out of lockdown and obviously be able to meet as the bigger group of person, because as we, we said at the moment, it's impossible for even a committee to meet. Because if you count the member of staff and possible member of, of the public, we will be more than six person indoors. So, so I'm not quite sure what's going to happen. But certainly we need to consider person with planning. This is going to be a big problem and I'm not sure if the government has taken some, you know, probably not, but.
I think, I think it makes sense to keep the meeting scheduled. Because if there's any change in destination, there might well be, there might be some emergency appeal or something. We should keep them scheduled. And if we can't meet, we're just going to have to cancel them. But for the time being, I think we made the same mistake during the first lockdown last year of cancelling all our meetings for a long time. It was harder to re-establish them. So I personally prefer that we keep the meeting scheduled and we cancel them as, as necessary. Because there could be an appeal or a, or an emergency piece of legislation that changes everything by June the 8th, say. So, so perhaps we'll be able to meet.
I hope so.
Deputy town clerk.
Thank you, Chair. And yes, really echoing what you just said, actually, this, this calendar is to be treated as accepting the meetings for the civic year. Tomorrow's meeting is to put in place a contingency plan based on the updated, updated legislation that we have for remote meetings. So they're two separate things.
Councillor Gregson.
Hi, yeah, can I just reflect councillor Simonas's words on the strategy committee? I think we need strategy committee meetings just before we do the budget if possible. So I was just going to suggest we put an extra one in. Sorry, everybody, before the full town council meeting on Tuesday, the 28th of September. Just so we get the meeting sort of bunched in just before we do the budget, which the strategy obviously feeds into.
That's a good suggestion. So councillor Pitt.
So just on a, well, a similar note, but I think the P and E has a quite a big gap as well because I don't know August and it's only bi-monthly. And I guess we, we always have the option to call extra meetings depending on the workload. And I think certainly with budget setting, yeah, September sounds really good, but we may just need to accept that depending on what's going on, committees may need to meet additionally. And we'll have to find a way.
So are there any other further changes or shall we approve this calendar? I'm going to propose that we accept this calendar as a calendar of meetings for the coming civic year. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Thank you councillor Christine Green. All those in favour say yes.
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 Anyone against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Agenda item number 10, to receive confirmation for the responsible financial officer of arrangements for insurance cover in respect to all insured risks. RFO, are you with us? I'm sorry you've had to sit through these hours. We should have done this earlier.
Chair.
Oh, no. Okay, I apologize. Sorry, sorry, Theodora. I will be with you in a second. Agenda item number nine is a rather important one, general power of competence. To resolve the town council's eligibility to continue to act under general power of competence, GPC. Philip, is there anything we need to do other than approve this? If we have, obviously we're going to vote on it.
You, you just need to approve that you're going to use it.
I will propose it then. Do I have a second?
Councillor Thorpe seconds.
Thank councillor Thorpe. Let me just check my screen. Okay, all those in favour say yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Anyone against say no? Any abstentions? That motion is carried. Sorry, Theodora, agenda item number 10, to receive confirmation from the RFO of arrangements for insurance cover in respects to all insured risks. RFO, can you confirm that we are insured for all insured, we have insurance cover for all insured risks?
Yes, I can confirm, Chair.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number 11, to adopt the council's current standing orders for 21, 22. So those standing orders are in the agenda pack and there have been some changes, haven't there, I think, since we last reviewed these? I think we, so these are the model standing orders that are, I think I'm going to let councillor Gregson has a hand up to explain it because she was chair of personnel who changed.
Yes, so I just wanted to say that these don't reflect the changes that personnel discussed and debated at length in the meeting on the 10th of March. So I don't know if we wanted to, the problem is, is we might not have any more meetings. But I really wanted to ask if we could postpone this so that we can reflect those changes that personnel agreed but haven't yet gone through to full council.
Philip, how should we proceed here? Shall we accept these? Shall we vote to accept these standing orders and then subsequently change them? What's your suggestion?
I would, you need standing orders. You either continue with your existing ones or you adopt the amended ones, but you can always at a full town council meeting then amend those.
So I would propose that we adopt these standing orders, but also that we, that we discuss the revised standing orders at the next town council meeting. Do I have a second for that?
Councillor Maslin.
Thank you councillor Maslin. Maslin, councillor Chapman.
Sorry, can you confirm, the vote is, the vote is to adopt the current standing orders?
The, the standing orders which are in the, in the agenda pack.
And have these been amended, are these amended from previous standing orders? There's, there's a, there's a number of sections that have highlighted.
Deputy town clerk, what's the situation?
This is the only electronic copy that I could find. These were the ones that went to full council in 2019. They weren't reviewed last, last year. So it's adopting to continue with this. And then if any amendments need to be made, as councillor Gregson said, that they could be heard at the council meeting. I have no other copy of these.
What are the high, sorry, what are the highlights for then? Agenda writing, sorry, number 19 has highlighted text.
So Stephen, I think that the highlighted text is because that's what we looked at in personnel.
Thank you councillor Pitt.
Yeah, thank you. There's a lot of echo. People can mute. That would be much appreciated.
Hang on a second councillor Pitt, I'm going to mute everybody, then you could unmute yourself. Councillor Pitt, unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. So yeah, I had a quick look at the highlighted section, does match the copy I have back from 2019. So the, the agenda pack wording is as per the 2019 standing orders. If that adds any clarity.
Thank you very much. So these are existing standing orders and we're going to be voting to, to, what is it saying on the agenda? Let me scroll back up. We are to, voting to adopt the current standing orders for 2021, 2022. And we've, we've confirmed that these are the current standing orders. So that is my proposal. I had a second, which is Colin, councillor Maslin. No more hands up. All those in favour?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
All those, anybody against say no? Any abstentions?
I'm going to abstain. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Gregson. That's carried. A final agenda item number 12, to adopt the council's current financial regulations for 2021, 2022. I presume that these are also unchanged because of the use word, use the word current. So I'm happy to propose those. Councillor Pitt, you have your hand up?
Just to confirm, these are the ones that we adopted on. Just to confirm, these are the ones that we adopted on the 27th of April, so last full town council meeting. So these are the up to date ones. Thank you. And I second them. Second the proposal.
All those in favour say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
All those against say no? Any abstention? That's carried and the meeting is over. Thank you very much.